I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
The first item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. We have December 7th and December 14th of 2015.
Okay, I'll make the motion when you approve those.
Second.
Motion by Roberts, seconded by Marlin. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. Petitions and communications, I have one. Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood do not wish to speak. However, they are concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Okay. We do have a presentation from the Urbana Business Association. Would you like to come up?
Good evening, everybody. I am here to present on 2014-2015 annual report for the UVA, and then also give an update of what I have going on for 2016.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
I am Paris Blaylock, Ed, the Executive Director with Urbana Business Association.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so what I did for this first section, as far as the annual report goes, is I just pulled the business plan that was written previous to me starting there for 2014-2015, and then I, from each section, I just pulled out future plans and then what the outcome was. So, under the mission, there was a goal from the Executive Director and the board to write a new vision and mission statement. As of June and today, actually, the mission statement has remained the same. But as far as a new vision for the UVA, I will address that later on regarding my 2016 plans. Membership, there was monthly membership networking meetings that alternated between morning and evening ones, and then merchant meetings for different areas of the city. So, those networking events were continually held through 2015. And there was one pilot merchant meeting that was held for the downtown businesses to just get their feedback on what was occurring with the UVA and how they felt the UVA was servicing them. And, but there was no further meetings for other areas that were held during that time period. Okay. And as far as the plans for the events, during the time when this business plan was written, Uncorked Urbana Wine Festival was a new event. So, the first one was held after this plan was written, and it was successful, and it will continue to be an annual event. And we do have a schedule to run again this coming June. And then, as far as the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival and partnering with the CU Folks and Roots, that did happen, and that was successful from the reports that I did receive. And, and then there was also a meeting held with the downtown businesses. Well, there was one scheduled, it looks like the attendance was low, but it was still productive for the people that did show up. They did give some good feedback on how to improve that in the future. And for marketing, as of the report, there was some shop local ads that were run on several radio stations, and those seemed to be successful as well. And then, as far as the human resources section, there was, at the time, two full-time employees, which would be the Executive Director and the Marketing Events Coordinator, and then one part-time employee, which is the accountant. So, that was for the 2014-2015 annual report. And then, there was also a business plan that was written regarding 2015-2016, but I have actually updated that from when that did come out. So, these are the things that I have planned for 2016. A brief overview. Yeah, sure.
So, just let me, maybe you could like, maybe you could tell me a little bit about the shop local promotion that you said had taken place on radio stations. How do you get feedback to find out whether that really amounted to a successful campaign?
I was not here during that time, but from what I gather, talking with the members, was that they did feel that there was some benefit promoting the shop local. But I don't have a lot of data on that. I just have limited reports.
Does that report include holiday shopping, or was that too more recent than?
Yeah, that would be more recent. This was, I'm reporting through the end of the 2014-15 fiscal year, which would have ended last June.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah.
Question also.
Sure.
Okay, Erin.
What radio stations did you use?
To my knowledge, I know it was 96.1, and then, which is through Stevie J Broadcasting. And there is also the other one, W, it's the News Gazette radio stations. I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank right now.
WDWS?
Yes, yes. Those are the two main ones that I know during that time period that we were advertising on. But for the future, I actually have expanded our marketing efforts and the different media outlets that we're going to be using. And I'll touch on that a little bit later. But I have made deals with many marketing and media outlets in town, TV, radio, newspaper, where we get bulk discounts for our members and for ourselves, you know, for purchasing with these particular media outlets.
So, these are all to advertise the various different businesses in Urbana, right?
From my understanding, yeah. From my understanding during that time, yes. And I don't have all of the information from when I wasn't there, but I do know for myself, now that I have taken over, that I will be using all of these different media. For one, the group discounts are for members, so they'll be able to take advantage of those discounts for being a UVA member. But also for us, the advertising portion that we purchase, not only will be used to advertise the UVA or the events that we have coming up, but highlighting different areas of town and businesses that normally get missed. So, we'll use our advertising dollars, say, for the crossing or, you know, the, you know, over there by the pines, wherever it may be, for us to highlight those area and push businesses not just focused on downtown, but the outskirts and all of Urbana that, you know, most of the time, I think, get missed.
All right, thank you.
Diane.
This is regarding the merchant meetings, where one pilot merchant meeting was held in downtown, and then no further meetings were held. Do you know, this was before your time, do you know why no further meetings were held?
I don't know if it was in the transition when the position wasn't filled or got busy during Sweet Corn, and then the former Executive Director left. I really don't have knowledge necessarily why the meetings didn't continue. But I do know that the meeting that was held, you know, there was some really good feedback from that, and as far as why it was, there weren't any more held for other areas of town.
So, it wasn't because that first one was successful?
No, no. From my understanding, it actually went really well. I just don't know if time got away from them, or if it was, like I said, the transition, or a bad time of year to follow up with it during the summer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just to be specific, on the radio pieces, are you inclusive in what you're planning to do moving forward? Will you be looking at place, radio stations like 105.5 WBCP?
I actually looked at 105.5, and since they are out of Decatur at this point, I wanted to focus on local radio stations that we can have immediate results from, I think, you know, more local. So, it's getting to Champaign-Urbana clients and consumers that are here in this local area versus trying to pull all the way from Decatur. I think maybe in the future, I would look at that, but we have limited advertising dollars, and I really wanted to focus here in Champaign-Urbana.
Well, I know that there's quite a significant listening base in Champaign-Urbana for 105.5, and especially during the morning hours, the Steve Harvey Morning Show and different things like that, quite a few people use that as a venue to get information out. I mean, you just can't block out Decatur, but it's still serving a purpose. I understand trying to keep the dollars local, but also reaching another part of the community that doesn't get reached through WDWS or 96.1.
Yeah, and we, no, I completely understand, and, you know, Illini Radio Group is another one that we're talking to as well. And I did look at 105.5, and it's not completely ruled out. It's, you're right, especially as far as Steve Harvey. I mean, I listen to that in the morning sometimes, too, so.
And what about WBCP?
That's, I would be able to look in that as well and see what the options would be with them. I have to meet with some advertising reps and look at their rates and see what they would be able to offer as in bulk, because the media that I am working with, I was able to work out deals where we could purchase in bulk for them, too, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Why don't you proceed?
Okay. Okay, so, one of the first things I have done is to completely restructure the memberships and the annual dues. Previously, it was based on a tiered system, and it included a number of items. Each membership, what you would get, your membership would grow for each level. So, you would start out with, let's say, five benefits, and then you would add it to seven, eight, 10, whatever it may be. But now, I've actually restructured it to where it's based on the number of employees per business. And, and as far, the annual dues would increase overall, because of, I actually did a thorough analysis of the numbers and compared it to our current membership structure to what I've put in place now, and we can actually increase our dues based on this structure. And then, all members would have access to all of the same benefits and services, so we would be able to offer the same thing for everybody across the board instead of having to pay into a higher rate just to get those more benefits and services that you would receive. And then, this became effective as of January 1st. And then, I did some UVA rebranding, so we actually updated our logo. And so, these are different variations of the logo that we'll be using. And we also completely reconfigured and redeveloped our website. And that is actually still in the process. This week, it should be finalized. We're still working with the web development company to finish that up. And then, the new memberships and benefits and services, there's a membership management software called Member Zone, and so that is a cloud-based software that integrates with our website, which allows our members to interact with the website more and with the organization. It does utilize, has some really good reporting. We can track events, have reports on those events, payments, there's membership billing, payments, and online renewals. New members sign up and pay online, and then it also allows us to have new ways to bring in more revenue. And then, in the packet, there's, there's a lot of details on what this membership software can bring to us, so, and I won't necessarily go over all of that right now, but it is in your packet where you can see all of the details of what this software will bring to the UVA, and allowing us to not only gain more income, but actually boost our member interaction. And then, we actually redesigned our newsletter. We did have two newsletters. One was a weekly one addressed to the community, and one was a member-based one, but I actually decided to merge it into one newsletter, so I think it would, you are able to address both the community and the members, and then, members, or the businesses that aren't necessarily part of the organization would still see what the member benefits are, as well as just being able to interact with everybody within the community and our members. So, it used to be just a weekly report of all the events that are going on in town, but now, we're actually going to do, you know, have more exciting design, layout, and content. And then, there's several sections that we'll have, as far as editorial, why I love the UVA section, events, a members-only section, a Dear UVA, and then we'll also be able to have paid ads in this newsletter, which will be another revenue stream that we can obtain. And then, here's a list of other services and events that we will be working on and hosting throughout the year. So, the marketing program I touched base on. We are going to be offering graphic design services in a limited capacity that are complimentary, included in your membership, as well as on a fee-based method. And then, of course, the morning and evening monthly networking events. We'll have quarterly educational luncheons, business seminars, entrepreneur roundtable meetings, a member-hosted educational seminars, prospective member meetings, new member events, 13 Thursdays Annual Awards Dinner, and then a new membership drive that I will begin in February of this year. And like I said, also in your packet, there's detailed accounts on what each of these things are. And then, other revenue generators, touched on the Member Zone software, graphic design, our weekly newsletter, and then member and non-member pricing for website ads and sponsorships. And we're here at the very end, so right now, we currently have 169 members. 154 of those 169 are paying members, which generate approximately 29,800 annual membership dues. And then, 15 of those 169 have in-kind memberships. So, I wanted to set some goals for 2016 on gaining new revenue and new members. So, for 2016, overall, I want to have a net gain of three new paying members per month, and that would generate for us, based on some statistics that are in your packet, gross revenue of $14,750 additional in membership dues. And, and then, this last slide is just showing what the goal is to end the 2015-2016 fiscal year and for revenue in memberships.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Paris? Diane.
I, I seem to remember in the past, the UVA's fiscal year was a calendar year, and the city's was, was obviously not. So, I'm seeing your budget here is now based on the July to June. Are you switching? Have you switched to a different fiscal year?
Yeah, this, I think we're in our second year of the, doing our fiscal year from July through June.
Oh, great, to match the city's. Okay, so, can you remind me, the city has a contract with the UVA. I can't remember off the top of my head what the city's contribution to UVA is this year. Can you?
This year is, I have, that's, well, there's two different ones. There's actually, here, I can pull it up. It is. So, for staffing reimbursements, for this year, this fiscal year is $40,000, and then, for operational is $31.5.
And then, there was some marketing? Wasn't there marketing as well?
Well, I think operational, it encompasses several different things. So, there's, there's just the two main ones, which are the staffing and operation.
So, a total of $71.5?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And is this the third year of our contract?
We're in the second year of our contract, and we'll have one more starting for 2016-2017.
In July?
In July, correct.
And how much is that for?
That one, I think, that one I don't have in front of me right now. I think it goes for staffing to 35. I think it decreases by 5,000 per year.
Okay.
Okay, Charlie has a question.
Paris, real quickly, was there a newsletter on the 30th of December? Or when, or was that one skipped? I don't see one.
No, we sent out a Christmas card email instead.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. And then, the new newsletter will actually start coming out next week, and then it'll come out on a weekly basis.
Okay.
We're finishing up writing the content for that one.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Paris?
Yes.
Erin.
I'm just trying to make sure I completely understand the role. I saw you talked about the mission and the vision statement and stuff like that of the UVA. Is the primary goal of the UVA to advertise businesses in Urbana and the events? I'm just trying, I don't know if I understand exactly what the role is.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. The vision of the UVA is to promote businesses, help businesses grow, help the business owners, and then help them interact with the community as well. So, it's the overall goal that the businesses are successful, and they can come to us to help them, not necessarily just with what we're offering, but we have an open-door policy. If they have any questions or need advice or counseling on anything, we're there to help them develop and grow, as well as the events, you know, for the community, so everyone is living and, you know, acting together, because that's the only way the businesses are going to grow, and the community's going to grow as a whole.
So, if you take downtown Urbana, you would just do an advertisement for people to come and see downtown Urbana? Would you specify particular businesses?
Both. Yeah, so, my plan for the marketing campaigns, when I highlight the different areas of town, let's just say it's downtown, then it would be, visit downtown Urbana, and then alternating in the different ads, whatever, radio, TV, whatever it may be, then those different businesses would be mentioned in whatever was going on. And the same would go for whatever, every town that we would be promoting at the time. So, I want to rotate that throughout the year in order to highlight the whole entire community, not just one area.
Okay.
Okay. Diane.
Let's stick on that point there. In the past, UVA has focused most of its efforts on downtown Urbana, because that's, it's TIF, it's TIF dollars that are funding the UVA. So, so when you say you want to highlight other parts of town, your, will your funding sources allow you to do that?
So, what I did was I took a thorough look at our budget for advertising, and what I'm going to do is more strategically use those dollars and think about what we're using them for and what we're doing with them versus just randomly picking something to advertise on or about. I'm going to really focus on planning each marketing campaign that's within the budget that we have planned for.
And that would entail necessarily meeting with the merchants in the different parts of town, which goes back to those focused merchant, it's almost like a merchant focus group.
Yeah, and, and also, I'm doing a marketing, or not marketing campaign, but new member, new membership drive. So, instead of just waiting for members to come into, or new businesses to come to us, I'm making an effort by going out and visiting the different businesses, visiting the different areas of town, and then holding group meetings for those new businesses as well. So, I want to get to know the owners, the areas, and build a relationship with these people so they know who we are, what we're here for, and that we actually do care about other.
Areas of town?
Yeah, units of town versus the downtown area.
Because I can tell you, sir, other areas have felt very neglected by the UVA.
I do, I understand that. So, that's my goal for this year, is I want to get that image out of everyone's head and move on, and let them know that it's not just about downtown.
Okay.
So, I just have a point of clarification for our previous question. I'll be very brief, but Councilwoman Marlin had asked about the UVA contract, which is ongoing.
Oh, did?
And, yeah, I just want to make sure we got it right, because it is $40,000 this year for staffing, but the amount is $35,000 for operational funding. So, the total is $75,000 each year, and it does decrease by 5,000 each year.
Okay. Erin, you want to say something?
Yeah, so, because I'm still getting a firmer understanding of the TIF money and how it's used and stuff like that. So, have I heard you correctly, Diane, the TIF money funds the UVA?
I'm not in.
The city's part, yes.
They have membership dues, right?
A portion of, of the total funding is from the TIF districts. So, for 1415 is the breakout I have in front of me, but approximately $28,000 is from the general fund, and therefore would be unrestricted. And approximately $60,000 of that year's distribution was from the TIF district. And as you know, it steps down. The general fund contribution stays the same. The TIF district amount decreases, and then UVA receives funding for a membership and other sources and events, and that, that funding is unrestricted as well.
So, we have sort of collectively and creatively taken from all the TIFs to create a pool, or there's a particular TIF that funds?
TIF districts one and two, which are the downtown TIFs, which is why UVA's had historic focus on downtown, and also has to continue to have a focus in the downtown as well in proportion to those funds.
Thank you very much.
So, Paris, I would be happy to, to help in any way I can, especially in reaching out to WBCP or some of the other radio stations, and helping focus on some of the other businesses downtown, like Lord &amp; Lacy's and places like that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, we'll move on. Reports of standing committees, I don't believe we have that. Reports of special committees. Reports of officers. Did you want to talk? Brandon Boyes, Economic Development.
Good evening. I just wanted to go over a few quick highlights from the Economic Development Activities Report for December. Council may have noticed that we've made some formatting changes to this report, and we're going to continue to experiment with that. We're trying to make it more information-dense, easier to read, and easier to compare to previous reports so that you can sort of see progress if you compare a current report to a prior report. So, just briefly, in the downtown area, we had a number of new businesses in December. We had a, a new collab tenant, Nathaniel Alexander Architecture. Flight Bar and Lounge opened in Lincoln Square Mall. And Athletico Physical Therapy opened at Urbana Crossing, and that was the former Goodwill Label Boutique space, so that space filled up very quickly. The demolition of the Jolly Rogers is nearly complete. The building's completely down. Heel-to-toe Innovative Bracing completed their expansion on Main Street and is now open. And St. Patrick's Church on Main Street outside of downtown also completed their very substantial expansion of the church. At Gateway Plaza on the east side of northeast corner of Five Points, two new businesses opened, Ruby's Game Hall and My Office Plus. In the, also within the city, and in partnership with Urbana's Community Development Grants Program, the Urbana Blight Reduction Program has cleared three properties. If you'll recall, that is a roughly half a million dollar grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority that will ultimately result in the demolition of a dozen more blighted residential properties. So, our department's very proud of, of the progress in that regard. Staff in Economic Development continue to meet with representatives of TWG Development from Indianapolis. We're working towards a letter of intent for the redevelopment of the 200 South Vine Block, and a site visit is currently being organized for January 12th for council and staff to visit other projects of TWGs. And we're also very pleased to have received from the State Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity that Urbana Enterprise Zone, in partnership with Champaign County, has been certified. This is the culmination of about two years of effort. The last several months, we're just waiting. But Community Development, the mayor's office, the Economic Development Corporation, Champaign County, and actually, we partnered quite a bit with the city of Champaign as well, who also was successful in achieving his own. And, of course, we're very proud of your new Urbana Enterprise Zone because of the strong partnerships that were forged with the Urbana School District, the Urbana Park District, our township, MTD, and Parkland College, so that we will be able to offer robust property tax abatements, in addition to sales tax exemptions, to continue to encourage new commercial growth, as well as residential growth, which we feel is something that sets our Enterprise Zone apart.
I think you did a really good job, so thank you for that. I think you did a really good job, so thank you for that. I also like to acknowledge Mike Munson for having the idea to include residential, which is very different, and I think it's something that we need right now. A little more balance.
And so we can't rest, having received the certification now. A lot more work begins in branding and marketing this incentive program. We have, we need to first reach out to projects that are currently underway or nearly underway that are eligible, to our residential and commercial developers who own property or have projects planned in the near future, to realtors, to contractors, and also to potential new home buyers and new businesses as well. So we'll be rolling out many different aspects of a marketing operation in order to make sure the public is well informed of these incentives and if they may be of value to them and what they're planning to do.
Okay, who's first? I think Dennis and then Diane.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that what a great plan. I know that Community Development has put a lot of energy into making it. It was a very strong proposal and got approved, which is wonderful for the city of Urbana. And besides helping, coming in at a kind of a key time because we have a lot of potential development opportunities coming up for us in the downtown and other areas, the residential aspect of it and how it helps to even out the disparity between property tax levels between the two communities here in the Champaign-Urbana area has been, is going to be a real benefit, I think, for seeing some development in areas where, which we're kind of just waiting to see what, you know, the ball begin to roll on properties that are owned by larger corporations and property holders, which this may incentivize to initiate, you know, real construction plans. So congratulations very much.
Diane?
Yes, ditto. And my question is, I won't, is, on the last page, under Research and Analysis, you list home values increasing by point three percent in the last, well, I guess it was a month last fall. And the source is Zillow. Is, every time I look at Zillow, the values make no sense, you know, when you look at, when you consider our local market. And is, is, is that a reliable source?
It may not be the most reliable source, but it is one of the most consistent in providing longitudinal data. So we also compare that to Champaign County Association of Realtors data. However, we're limited in terms of being able to get granular localized data, and Zillow is one of the few places that offers that in a localized fashion. But I do believe they utilize logarithms and things that, that take some of that macro data and make it more localized, which is, I think, why you might see some trends that don't always match up. But we are now introducing this information in these reports, and we'd like to do so on a regular basis and get your feedback on what information you're finding to be valuable so that we can include more indicators and better indicators so we can track our progress and activity. So if, if you don't feel that's a good source, that's something we'll take into consideration as, as we continue to modify this report for council.
Well, is, is our own assessor, our own Dan Stubbin's data being taken into account here as well?
No, that's actually a really good point.
I mean, that's actual, that's actually based on appraisals and sales, right? Neighborhood by neighborhood.
Yes. One convenient aspect of the Zillow data is that it will, it will automatically and very effortlessly, we can, we can make that data specific to a locality and also can compare, you know, between municipalities. And we don't have that flexibility when, when we're crunching the numbers ourselves, but, or if the assessor staff is. So we, we'll reach out to them. Thank you for that suggestion.
The reason I question Zillow is I, I look at a lot of houses for sale just because I, I like looking at houses. And, and houses that I'm very familiar with are described on Zillow as being, you know, they're off by two or three bedrooms and bathrooms. I mean, they're not accurate based on, so I'm concerned about using Zillow as the basis for any kind of benchmark that we measure anything, but I'd rather use our own appraisals and assessment data than our own home sales. And I'm sure we could get better data from the realtors somehow if we could figure out how to do that. That's just my experience with Zillow.
Thank you.
Eric?
So, of course, let me add my voice to the chorus of congratulations. And I'm looking at the map, and if I understand the map correctly, along most of University Avenue, both sides of the street are included, north and south, is that correct?
Yes, you mean in terms of the, the project locations?
In terms of the project locations, so that, I mean, university's the boundary, but in those cases, it's both north and south that are within the zone.
Yes, yeah.
And so, so I guess, I, I, so one of my comments is that one of the terrific things about this is that it will give us the ability to provide tremendous tax benefits to start up biotech associated with the, with the new medical school because the area, that corridor between Carl and the engineering campus is, is included. So that's terrific, and I'm so glad to see that.
Bill?
Yeah, just a couple of comments on the residential aspect. I think it's exciting to have that in there, and I, I'm glad to see you're working with developers because I have known several colleagues lately that have wanted to live in Urbana, but they wanted to have a move-in house, you know. And what's selling and what's being developed and selling, you can look in census data and see this, and Mohammed and Savoy is the two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollar range of new construction, not the three hundred, four hundred where you have to take two years yourself and design it and get it built, like, or, you know, buy a lot and start from scratch. So I think it's important to get developers to build on speculation, at least a little bit, and have some inventory available for people because there are people that want to buy a house in Urbana, they don't really care about the extra few hundred dollars or maybe a thousand dollars a year it's going to cost in property taxes right now because they're buying for the long term and they want, they want someplace close to work and they appreciate the quality of life and everything. So I'm glad to see that effort and I hope that'll be fruitful. So, yeah, that's, that price range, I think that two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand is, is a good target. That's what's selling right now, or the past few years.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other reports of officers? Anyone else want to read one? Okay. We will move on to new business. The first item is a staff appointment, actually to the Human Relations Commission, Samuel Bindum, who seems to be extremely well qualified.
I'll second his.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion with the, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. And we will move on to ordinance number twenty sixteen dash zero one dash zero zero one, an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Urbana, thirty-one oh six North Cunningham Avenue.
So this is a case following up on an annexation agreement that was reached in August for thirty-one oh six North Cunningham. That was an ordinance number two thousand fifteen zero seven zero six eight with DGS Properties and Stark Excavating on their wanting to purchase the property to install a construction yard as well as a manufacturing and recycling site for concrete ready-mix and asphalt. Within that annexation agreement, there was a granting of a special use permit for the aspect of the manufacturing concrete ready-mix and asphalt, as well as the approval of a conditional use permit for the properties used as a construction yard. So pursuant to the annexation agreement that was passed in August, the staff recommendation is for an approval of the proposed annexation petition. Just to briefly cover the, the aspect of the fiscal impact, in my talks with Stark Excavating and DGS Properties, they said that the work is still very preliminary in coming up with any fiscal numbers for, on an evaluation of the, the revenue from, the property tax revenue from the property to provide anything that'd be accurate, but the staff doesn't foresee any additional demand for city services as a result of the annexation and that it would overall be a positive impact for city revenue. So pursuant to the annexation agreement, staff recommends a vote of approval. Did you have any questions about approving the annexation petition?
Any questions? Mike?
So just a couple of things real quick. I remember we had talked about a couple of issues back in August when this was approved. One had to do with my concern about the residential property to the south and that those folks had, I guess, had in fact signed off at that time with the annexation. So there's no material variance with what they're wanting to do with the property here, right? I mean, this annexation agreement is, and their plans for the property are still consistent with what we looked at in August?
Yes.
Okay. My second question had to do with the antenna on the property, which allows them to build to a height of the existing antenna. I recall at that time that the estimate given by staff or by the folks from Stark was sixty, sixty-five feet. I've driven by there and it can't be more than thirty-five, maybe forty at the top. I'm concerned about air rights with Frasca Field. I understand the FAA will probably have more to say about that than we will, but I, I do think it would be worth our while to verify the height of that tower so we can actually determine what the height of the buildings can be on the property.
So we had looked into this matter in regards to FAA regulations. Basically, the, from, starting from a point of three thousand feet from where the runway ends, the calculations that we came up with were for the portion along the eastern side of Cunningham Road, it'd be a height limit of seventy-five feet. And it escalates at a scale of about twenty to one towards the far eastern portion of the property, the, the flag portion, as you go further east, that it has a higher height of approximately a hundred twenty, a hundred thirty feet. I'm, I'd have to find the specific email that, that we determined that. But, yeah, that's basically up to FAA regulations for that matter.
Okay. Okay, and then I guess I do have a third thing. With regard to the residents to the south, I believe at the time in August that Stark or the, the property owner had indicated that they would have some kind of visual screen or some other kind of, whether it be vegetation or fencing or something along the south border of the property. Is that still the case under this agreement?
There wasn't any, I'd have to double check in terms of any landscaping requirements for the site, but.
I don't know, I just seem to recall that there was some discussion about making sure there was at least a visual barrier.
It says, in the, in the annexation agreement, it says landscaping plan must be submitted with the corporate authorities prior to development of the tract. The plan must reflect conformance with standards for screening of industrial storage and required landscape buffers as required by the zoning ordinance. So at least in that regard to what the, the ordinance already requires.
So the current ordinance would require something along that line? Along the south property line?
Most likely, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dennis?
Yeah, this doesn't so much have to do with the specifics of this case, which we did review, you know, earlier, last year, but as the development of North Cunningham, just on the outside of the city limits, continues to be industrial oriented, and now we have a lot of recycling, now we have concrete and asphalt grinding and, I don't know, resurfacing kind of product, projects accumulating there. What's the vision for the city Community Development Planning Department to see the potential for any kind of future retail on Cunningham Avenue to the north? We have farm and fleet, we have outlots that haven't moved, but as we include more and more companies that are using the land for construction and recycling centers, has that changed the potential ultimately for making North Cunningham a future retail area?
Well, as for designating the space for future retail and commercial space, there is some designation of that in the comprehensive plan, although they also designates the, it designates a majority of the portion of this particular property for regional business, which, some of which is consistent with light industrial use. And the rezoning of the, the parcel would be rezoned from the Champaign County designation of B four to IN one Light Industrial Office, which would be, still would be consistent with some of the contiguous zoning parcels around, around the area, so.
And is the fact that these are becoming sites that are accumulating non-retail specific businesses really out of our control because the individuals who purchase the properties just don't have those interests?
I'll take that if that's all right.
Sure, please do.
I did want to point out, it's my understanding that there is some retail component to this. I don't see Stark in the audience, but it's my understanding that there's certainly smaller, smaller businesses could go there to get their materials. It's not just the big guys doing all the huge road projects. There are, there is a retail component here. And I should also point out, this lot isn't really conducive to a large, big box store. For instance, it has very little frontage along Cunningham. It's pretty deep, so it wouldn't necessarily be the number one site that a store would go to because they want to have their frontage, they want you to see their store from the street. So in this case in particular, I think industrial use is probably the best use for the site.
And I'm not going to say that it's not going to work, but if, if most of the properties along Cunningham get rezoned into light industrial, we're not going to have any, you know, it's not going to be a, a business corridor in the way some of us imagined it, you know, like seven years ago. And I'm just wondering, to what degree do we surrender North Cunningham to the hope of commercial development in the sense of retail, you know, a prospect avenue shopping kind of corridor?
Charlie?
Well, I, I think you've got to look at Cunningham two different ways. You've got the section down by the interstate, and you've got this section, which is north of Airport Road. You've got an air, you know, you've got Frasca on the, on the, on the west side, which is already light industrial and all the light industrial nearby that. And so you've got, you know, the, the Mervis Recycling Center right next door. This just seems like, you know, the, the dividing line is sort of Airport Road and to the south of it, you've got lighter, a lighter mix of things, and to the north of Airport Road, you've got the development of, of, continues, continuing development of light industrial.
Sure, and I see that. But I'm also, you know, aware that we have Soccer World, you know, and right next to the, the airport, and we have other things that are retail destinations and for individual families. And I just was wondering about maybe where the vision, maybe it's time actually to reconsider, you know, in a long run manner, the, the goals of the, you know, our development plan, you know, for the next. the goals of the, you know, our development plan, you know, for the next 20 years. Currently, we're working on a plan that's, was masterminded in 2005. And, you know, if we don't reserve or have a, have an intention to use perhaps the new Economic Development Zone to bring retail into the North Cunningham area. And if you can't imagine retail ever going north of Airport Road, then certainly nothing will occur. So it depends really now on what our, what our imagination wants to take us to, how we perhaps can model our future.
Aaron?
I want to add, you know, I agree with much of what Dennis is saying. I understand the the concerns that we have with bringing business in, whether it's retail or if it's light industrial. But I'm also envisioning, you know, I love the green space, so I mean, I'm thinking about though, the what's going to go right there off of 74? What is there, do we have something where the old hotel was? And, you know, what, so what's going to go there? And so I'm very curious myself, I've been talking about this for some time now with some other people about how do we see, what is the vision of that area and how will it be developed? And so, you know, I'm curious myself, is, if we put a if there's another big hotel or something that goes there, you know, where, what's the attraction for people? You know, where do they go, you know? So I'm just kind of curious myself as to what the vision is.
Well, that area has a similar designation of, you know, regional business, which somewhat different from, say, if it were community business or, you know, neighborhood business. There there's a, there's a wide range of of draws that, you know, the regional business is meant to encourage for something that, that that offers services to the Champaign-Urbana area and just a little bit beyond. Utilizing the space, you know, along the interstate and along, you know, 45. But I think, you know, as Charlie said, north and south of Airport Road, you're dealing with different situations and traffic that's, that's oriented towards the, mainly towards the south of the city and towards Champaign is going to be very different than traffic that's north of Airport Road, and you might see different sorts of development accordingly. I can't speak for the, you know, the site along the, where the old hotel was, or that those are, I think, case by case matters, but it has a similar designation going that far north and south along Cunningham.
And I think the difference also is that those are already zoned with a commercial zoning, if I'm remembering correctly. So the future use wouldn't be able to be a more industrial use without a rezoning.
I think it's important to point out that we are working on things south of Airport Road, and it is geared toward commercial. Take, that's why we're taking down the Hanford Inn. We just want to have a better use for it. And we have a thriving automobile dealership on that part of the road as well. Eric?
So I think there are two issues here. I mean, I, I'm, I think it's great to have a, a vision. But I think that the, to a certain extent, the vision for the whole community is something like the plan for a military battle. It lasts until the battle starts. And the, and, and you've got to look, when you get specific cases like this property. And the property, I agree, I mean, the argument is very compelling. That is not, that property is not configured in such a way as to really be good for retail. It's configured for, to be appropriate for, for light industrial. So I think that the, I think that the central plan or the central vision, at the end of the day, if we have case by case issues that, or case by case eventualities that say, that, that may not jive with our initial vision, I think that we need to, you know, face the reality. The case, the situation before us now is whether we should approve the annexation agreement under the, with the zoning that is specified as
To clarify, the agreement's already been approved. This is for the annexation petition to follow up.
The annexation petition, yeah, okay. So, so I think that, and I, you know, I'll, I'll vote yes, and as we see, you know, what develops along that corridor, what opportunities occur across that corridor, I, I think maybe we need to, you know, maybe the vision needs to be modified.
Diane?
Well, my vision for the Hanford Inn site is a Costco. And with that, I'll move ordinance number 2016-01-001.
Second.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Mr. Brown?
Just a question on the, the special use permit and the conditional use permit. Have those have already been approved? Is that right?
Yes, the processes for those were part of the annexation agreement with the planning commission and with council action, so those will be issued upon the annexation.
And then if the property changes hands, does, remind me, do not go with the owner? They'd have to be reapproved, is that right?
They
If the activities are the same, it can continue on.
Oh, okay, if they stop using it for that purpose and changing. Okay, thanks.
Dennis?
And then just for Lori, just a question. So, working on a comp plan dated 2005, do you imagine that community development will want to think about forming a new comp plan in the coming years?
We as planners are always thinking ahead on comprehensive planning, so I can't give you any timeframes, but of course, it's on our, it's always on our list.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
I too want a Costco's. Absolutely, I want a Costco's, and I want a Bass Pro Shop right there where that hotel used to be, yes.
Well, there's both.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Aye for Costco's and Bass Pro Shop, indeed.
Mr. Madigan?
Good luck on both those projects, yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
I actually want a Golden Corral.
Right there with a
Don't, aren't you missing someone, Madam Clerk? Here? What do you want? And I will not give a speech about it. Okay, so that motion carries. Next, we have ordinance number 2016-01-002, an ordinance approving a major variance to allow a change in the required front yard setback from 25 feet to zero feet at 410 West Florida Avenue in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District. And we have the two people who are the applicants available for questions or comment.
Okay, I'll make this pretty quick. This is a house on the southern edge of the Westerbendin neighborhood along Florida Avenue. Florida Avenue is in need of being repaved. It's fatigued, there's been, it's not able to be repaved because of the status of the capital improvement program and revenues, so the city has shifted traffic patterns along the streets to expand, as a temporary fix, to expand the lifespan of the street until it can be fixed. It has to be repaved within the next 10 years, according to the city engineer. But when it will be repaved is indefinite, not determined. Byproduct of that is that parking along the street has been removed. This household, along with mostly our households, are zoned R1, or the surrounding houses on the block, the single-family residential homes built around mid 20th century. The applicant is requesting, because of the loss of parking, to the ability to allow a major variance to reduce the required front yard setback, to apply, to create additional accessory parking space in the front yard. The situation with most of these households is that they are legal nonconformities. The required front yard for this block is, or for R1, is the average setback of the front yard or 25 feet, whichever is greater. Because the average setback, when I measured, was about 24 feet, therefore it makes it at least 20, 25 feet. The applicant's home, Mr. Itay Sagiv and Ms. Darah Goldman, their home is, already exists within the required front yard setback to they have the capacity to park two vehicles, one in their garage and one on their driveway for off-street parking. The difficulty with that is that to back out one, it requires backing out, to back out the car that's in the garage, it requires backing out the car that's on the driveway. When there was on-street parking, that was much more feasible to do during the daytime. Obviously, with no parking avail, on-street parking available, and the traffic lanes going very close to the the street curve, that makes it more difficult. So they are requesting this variance so that they may put in an accessory parking space within the required front yard. And they're asking for the variance to do that. The accessory park, parking space would begin right at the property line, which begins kind of where the sidewalk ends. It would move diagonally to the northeast, kind of to the right, to the point of where it reaches a width of about eight feet, and then extends straight forward north. And with the staff assessment of all the variance criteria, whether it was a special circumstance, obviously it was something outside of their control, would it be a special privilege? We found two different examples of where an accessory parking space existed in the front yard right next to the driveway, or whether it would deter from the character of the neighborhood, or it wasn't a situation deliberately created by the petitioner, et cetera. It would not cause a nuisance to the adjacent property. The petitioners have said that their neighbor to the west has stated no opposition to their plans, and that it represents the minimum deviation from the requirements in the zoning ordinance generally was to our finding as well. I just want to point out that the property has very narrow side yards of about six feet and eight feet respectively on the side yards, so accessing any space in the back to create an accessory off-street parking space is not, not possible, give it, or for all practical reasons, to create an access on either of those sides as well. And the Urbana Zoning Board of Appeals reviewed the case and approved it unanimously with, or, I'm sorry, forwarded a recommendation of approval with, from reducing the required front yard setback from 25 feet to zero feet for the purpose of a creation of an, on accessory off-street parking space with the following conditions. That there's no more than one accessory off-street parking space created in the front yard setback reduction allowed by the variance. And the second condition being that the surface is paved with an approved surface or properly contained with curbing or approved landscape edging treatment as acquired in the zoning ordinance, so it might be paved, or it might be allowed to exist with gravel or a surface, industrial surface that's approved in the zoning ordinance. So staff recommendation is concurrent with the approval by the ZVA.
Charlie?
I think the design has minimal impact and would move approval.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson. Any other discussion? Dennis, and then Bill?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this. And I appreciate the fact that we're approving what can only really be a parking, parking space addition to your parking lot already, your driveway. I had a concern originally about whether granting this variance would allow the extension of the garage forward toward the street under maybe a future construction, but I see that that's not permitted. It is merely a parking spot that's being allowed this zero front yard depth. Is that correct?
Yeah, to interpret this, this variance, it would only apply to the, the purpose of off-street parking and for the creation of an accessory parking space.
Okay. And then I noticed on the map, we have basically what looks like a Google map or over a satellite map of the, of the city on Florida Street and their neighborhood. And I see that kitty corner to the north, east, northwest, facing Delaware, right behind them, basically, there's another house that has an additional, additional Y-shaped wing for parking in their front yard as well, so there's precedences on the block, and I certainly approve it.
Bill?
Yeah, I think this is a good solution, and I can tell from the air photo, it's been thoroughly tested, so thanks for bringing it to us and getting it approved officially. I'm sure there's dozens of houses around that go through the testing and then forget to get it approved, so thanks for doing that.
Eric?
I'll, I plan to vote for approval, but also extend our regrets that you needed to do this, that we just haven't had the resources to keep up with all of the, all of the street and road needs, so, so thanks for working with us.
Aaron?
I intend to support it, but I had a question for you all. Did you all present or ask for this variance once before? No? Okay. I thought I remember from the last time that you, when you came, the first time, you talked about Will you want to come up, please?
So I'm Itay Sagiv, for Ten West Florida. And, yeah, so I had spoken, I mean, it wa, this was a nuisance, although a relatively minor one, basically since I moved in. And I had spoken first with somebody a couple of summers ago, just before our wedding and honeymoon, and that didn't entirely follow what was happening, and been busy with first year of marriage, didn't really circle back to this. And then I spoke to Chris over the summer. And so we were perhaps already moving towards requesting such a variance even before the, the removal of on-street parking, but once that happened, that greatly increased my motivation to fill out all the paperwork.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no further business for this meeting, so let's adjourn it. Thank you all.